Hey John, can you hear us here? McCormick? Thanks, love. Hi, Brian.
Good evening.
Hey. All right, it is six o'clock, a little after. Like to call the order. The regular meeting of the Woodstock Planning Board for February 16th, 2023, held at the Como Building and via Zoom. We do have a forum. Do you have any updates to the agenda?
I do not.
Okay. So we have the minutes from February 2nd to approve. If everybody's in favor, please say so.
Hi.
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 Okay, communications and announcements. We have an email from Anse Bao regarding the online petition for the Calamar Lane Hotel. We have permits from Fam Acres to construct a waste disposal system from the Ulster County Department of Health. We have an email from Garner regarding the Terramore application, not to us, but the Terramore Project Consortium. And we have an email from Mr. Plasky regarding the hotel, the Calamar Lane. So tonight, we have two public hearings. And we have a sketch plan review after that. Well, the public hearing is for 6:05, so I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing. Second?
I second.
On favor? Okay. This is Fam Acres LLC, planning board case 211226, and the wetlands water course permit case number 21045. This is a public hearing for a subdivision application of 147 acre lot into 12 lots, including a lot line revision with Woodsy Mac LLC at 70 Eastern Lane in a wetlands water course permit application in the R3 zoning district located at 1883 Glasgow Turnpike in Woodstock. And the reps for this case are Melissa, Jonah, and Barry Medenbach of Medenbach and Eggers, Alec Glad of Cuddy and Federer, Brad Will of Ashokian Architecture, and Fred Meyer of McBain Associates. So.
You're outnumbered.
If they're present, members of the public have questions for the applicant, please give your name to Melissa and state your questions.
Do you want anything up on the screen?
I don't think so. Not yet, thank you. I appreciate you having it. If there's any, if there anyone on the Zoom meeting that would like to speak regarding Fam Acres, let me know now. I don't see anyone that had. He's not on it. No. And I've received several inquiries asking for it and nothing negative, nothing, no, no, no comments.
Okay, well, hearing none.
Okay, public, not that you'll need public.
I represent the public.
Okay, there we go.
So my name's Megan Denver, and I'm a contiguous neighbor. I'm at 1951 Glasgow Town Hall. But I first like to say, I think it's a very interesting proposal, and I'm not adamantly opposed to it. I just have some general questions that I think the seven acres that is kind of right behind mine is very generous to put just one home, but just have a couple of questions. And I've not really investigated what you guys do or how this came to be. So one of the questions I had was, so in the summer, sometimes my well gets a little low, and I'm just north of there. And I was wondering how you all decide with 12 homes going in that it wouldn't create a, you know, water shortage? Or if it's the same aquifer in our area that they might be having?
You could ask Barry that. He's the.
Caleb. Caleb, you're up.
Barry is important. The general is that we live in a pretty water-rich area, and all of these wells, whether they be drilled or pounded wells, are probably going to go, I mean, I, we don't really have to speculate on what the condition of your well. But generally speaking, there should be plenty of water for the amount of homes that are proposed.
Then why don't you bring someone?
Ah, just generally, there's, we don't see an issue with, again, it's a larger subdivision. And most wells, they drill, but the depth that they drill the well is just based on where they find the water, whether they're drilling down 200 feet or they're drilling down 500 feet. There's kind of typically always going to be some capacity.
And each parcel has its own well, just to piggyback off of what you said.
Yes.
To get to this point, they have to go through the Ulster County Health Department. They have to do perk texts, perk tests, sorry. They did their due diligence and have all Board of, have Board of Health approved permits for each lot?
So I just want to say, I built my house, so I have a little bit of understanding. When I used Titan, they said, there is so much water here. We drilled all these homes. I did that one, I did this one, that one. And they did 500 feet from mine before they got water. So I'm just saying, I think scientifically, I was looking for more, like, rather than a Titan, like, oh, there's just water everywhere. It's a wetland, so we'll have plenty of water. I felt like there might be a more, like, thoughtful, like.
Well, I'm not specifically a hydrogeologist, but we have other hydrogeologists report.
Can I just show you the map with all the wetlands on it?
Oh, cool.
That might be a somehow. I just pulled it up.
So you guys have water there?
This is all wetlands, all of these sort of, there's a great deal of water there. What there is below the surface is kind of hard to tell. And where aquifers run is hard to tell.
Yeah, that's all I was asking. I, I know there's wetlands there for sure. Like, I even have, a part of my property is quite wet, and I have a pond, a big pond in front of my house. But that didn't indicate that I would have water for my well. That's all. So it's a concern. So I guess not into the numbers answer, except that because we think there's a lot of water around, it's just the only answer.
Is there any formality of putting in a subdivision or something that they have to meet certain criteria with? Well.
Well, there is an existing one site, too.
And sometimes a really dense divisions, you do a test, a drawdown test, but this is such a huge area that it wouldn't.
It's a material, but they're really quite packed in.
How often does your water get low? Just once a year?
Pretty much every summer.
Every summer?
Yeah, we know what gets low, it gets dirty, right?
Yeah.
And I'm 500 feet down, so it was just a concern. I bought.
No, it's about.
Something, you know, in 12 houses, and it's right there, kind of packed in. Made me think, I just wanted to note that.
They are all individual wells.
They are individual wells.
Yeah, I mean, they, but where they can drill looks like, with the conservation area, it looks like they can only drill in a very small amount of that area. So it's, and they're right next to each other, so they would be, it wouldn't be, even though it's 100 plus acres, it's not like they're using 100 plus acres, they're really.
Have you seen the map for how far the house is from your house?
Yes.
You have?
Yeah.
Is it a decent distance? I feel like most of them were more central of the area.
So the thing I think of is that I have some familiar well drilling in Northern California, right? Everyone's putting in a permit because there's always so much water. So they, the analogy was, it's a glass of water, and we're just getting our straws and just passing. So I don't know about underground water in this area. I just hear from what I know, which is, I was told by Titan, no problem, you got it. We have 500 feet, they said, we can hydrofrack, or we can re-drill. And I was like, I think we're good. Like, I didn't have the most amount of water, but I also know from the mountains, they run out of water all the time, totally different thing. But I know just from my experience, that in the summer, this past summer, when it was dry in August.
Yeah, we had it really dry.
I had a similar problem. So it's just like, it's just a concern that they're all sitting out of the same aquifer, and who knows what it is?
Four.
What's the capacity?
Any subdivision? Yes, we hear you, but basically, if we get seal of approval from the Board of Health, I mean, they're the ultimate.
I got a sealed approval from the Board of Health, because I drove my well there. And I said, we're good. Didn't have anything to do with the water that was available.
Usually there's, there, I don't know of anywhere that we can't drill a well, basically, we can get water. It just depends on how much.
Well, you have to keep going if you don't have, was it four gallons?
Five gallons, is what they want. You want a minimum of five gallons per minute. Yes.
So you're proposing that if you create the subdivision, and House One has 500, but House, or five gallons, but House Two, you can't get it, you would do what?
No, there's, there's other things in play. If you can't get the flow rate, then you have to start talking about storage of water. Because at five gallons per minute, you know, daily use is going to be around 330 gallons for a three-bedroom house. And so you're, you're.
I was told that storage capacity of the home is actually not.
Not, not, not in the well, not storage in the well. The storage that you would have to put inside the house itself. But that's only if you have a flow rate less than five gallons per minute.
Right.
Again, I, I don't know of anywhere that that happens. We're in very, so it's such a water-rich area.
Can I, can I speak for this? I mean, I would have been in the woods, literally right next to a lake. And every house on that block, and they were much smaller lots, had different water. I had all kinds of iron in mine, somebody else didn't. Somebody else had a well that they didn't want to drink from because they didn't think it was safe. These things are so local. I mean, well, what, the aquifers are very local. You could be across the street and have a different relationship to the water underground.
Yeah, and just to build off that point, Melissa said they build, they drilled a well on Lot One, which has the existing barn, and they only had to go 200 feet down and have, not have the truce of water.
I mean, I take seriously your concerns, but one of the problems with aquifers is that you just don't know where they are.
But wouldn't that kind of be terrible, right? If it ended up, the people that were contiguous ended up without one. Without a big study, it seems a little chihuahua bee or something. It'll all work out, we'll just keep drilling. Doesn't, doesn't sound very locked out as far as water is concerned to me.
I'm trying to say there's no way to think it out.
Well, that's not true.
We could hire a hydrologist, and they couldn't tell you exactly.
The gentleman just said in proposed developments that there is something that's, you, you mentioned something.
When you're talking about the county health department.
That's what I was talking about. You mentioned something that it can be tested.
Yeah, there's drawdown test, but that's when you have houses right next to each other. And these houses are so far apart that one wouldn't affect the other.
The map that I lived on, it looks like we're all in that same little world that goes around and comes back.
The wells are usually drilled within 10, 15, 20 feet of the house because it has, the line has to be below frost to get to the house.
They aren't the houses quite close to each other?
So they're usually right next to the house.
No, this is 147 acre parcel.
I know, I've seen the map. No, I, I know, but I'm talking about the lots are long, they're tucked next to each other.
I mean, they're not any closer than.
What is the length of the lots?
Glasgow.
If you're coming in on the edge, I know. I don't.
Yeah.
But mine's not that wide. What is the length of the lots, generally speaking? This is seven acres that are tucked down below.
Because smaller lots are 350 to 400 feet.
Why?
Why?
Right.
That's a smaller loss.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's kind of close. You think your house is, your lot's 350, and there's another house that's 350. I understand it's 147 acres, but. Am I, is there something that I've missed out on? It's like I'm press pushing a pillow, but not, not a lot of.
No, water is always a concern for everybody, you know. It's a, Woodstock's quite fortunate that we do have quite a bit of water. And we have a lot of aquifers. But as Judy pointed out, you could have one house that have water, and the next house doesn't. Just the way the aquifers are.
I think what he's trying to say is that your water shouldn't be necessarily affected by.
If my water wasn't that, it'd be my rivers.
That I don't know.
Is this, is this the current, the current map?
Yes, or I don't.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
I mean, all these houses are right near the road, and all of the wetlands and other conserved property is between you and them.
Correct, but I don't know about aquifers. I thought maybe someone had done a study describing, so if I'm 500 feet down, what's the elevation from the top of the conservation area to the house? Does someone know?
A thousand or more? Which lot are you behind?
Like the third, about the third lot in?
Your lot three? Your, your house is above lot three?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, so the.
I can show you council line.
What they call the zone of influence is that it wouldn't, it wouldn't exceed the depth of your well, basically, so.
So that's less than 500 feet?
I, I, it would be very unlikely. I can't, again, I'm not a hydrogeologist, so, so, but reading from reports, it'd be very unlikely for the, what they call the zone of influence to affect your well.
Is there a recourse if it wasn't?
I can't speak to.
Oh, that's.
Right?
Drilling a well is always, always a gamble.
And with 12 homes going in, there's no, it's just we have lots of water is the answer.
No, it's quite often people have to re-drill wells, you know, if they run out of water, they drill somewhere else and try to get into the aquifer better.
My concern here is this is not an industrial pumping situation.
Yeah.
I mean, Terramore, they were talking about a huge amount of water. I had a problem in the place I was talking about before because the town over was drilling wells for the entire 20,000 people. This is a very different.
It's much lighter use.
It just feels colloquial, like, we have plenty of water, we just move on. It's like, we have plenty of forest, we're not going to worry about it. I, I, I don't appreciate that, I just want to say, I thought it would be more scientific, more based on studies, more just, rather than we have a lot of water.
As far as the planning board's concerned, like with this, we, we get documentation from, like, Michael Nowiki has done several studies on the ecosystems, the conservation. We've, what, it's almost two years you guys have been with us. There's so many reports that were done. And when it comes to water, what we rely on is the Board of Health. That's our document, and we really can't, help me out, guys. If we get the permit, we, we can't deny it. I'm.
I just don't think aquifer science is at the point where anybody can make you any guarantee.
It's a concern.
Any other questions for the applicants to the subdivision?
This, again, I'm sorry, this is taking.
Sorry, yeah, typically you're limited three minutes, so please. If you want, you're up, have at it, just try to.
Uh, so I wanted to know how the 60 trees per acre that would be left in the conservation area, is that something that is like a, is that?
What's left in the conservation area?
Yeah, so there's a, there's something here on item, it says harvesting trees and firewood for personal use. And then it says five inches more, blah, 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 that it was, that it would be 60 trees left per acre. Is that something?
May I ask you for that?
Please do.
The town law allows a certain amount of firewood harvesting and has definitions of clearcutting. None of that is going to happen on this property.
No, I understand, I just wanted to ask, is that something that's like, when the circuses decide here, like, where did that number come from?
The law, the town code.
The town code that is.
I would like to see it changed, frankly.
I'm sorry.
I would like to see it changed.
Would you like to see it changed?
I think allowing as much firewood as allowed in the law should depend on the size of a lot, and at the moment, it isn't. So if somebody has two acres, they could still take the same amount of firewood as if they have 100. It's nuts, we really need to change it. But that's where the law is now.
Yeah, no, I, I don't have any beef of that, I just want to know where it came from.
That's the town code.
20 years ago, or whatever.
You guys are saying two good things, she's saying town code, and you're saying.
It is town code, that's what.
So is it 60 trees per acre you have to leave? Town code, what they're saying, which I think is just a question.
Town code says, if you are clearcutting, and it doesn't even really define clearcutting for private property, but only for commercial law.
I hear you, I think there's a conflict here, because she said, I keep saying 60 trees, and she says.
Yeah, I can answer this. I just copied and pasted basically, you know, creative lawyer from the wetland and water course permit standards and put that into conservation restrictions.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Alex.
Which is applying now to 100 acres, to 100 acres, so.
So generous.
Yeah, which is in addition to just.
Yeah, no, and I just have to say, I think this is really beautifully done. I feel like I'm taking a turn here, like, I'm going to be the neighbor. I'm not, like, I support what you guys are doing. I think you've taken such a gentle hand with the beauty that's there. And I, I think it's just, I just had some questions, you know, like, that's all. Sorry, I don't mean to be that way.
That's why we're, this is why it's a public.
So my concern is that I am not your enemy, I'm your supporter. I'm Megan, I live up there, ah, hi, I have babies, I all good. Okay, very good.
Did you get all your questions answered? Did you have any other questions?
No, I, a couple, hey, nothing.
Any other members of the public have questions to the applicant?
I think I have one online. Nan, would you like to speak? I saw you pop on after I asked. You just have to unmute yourself and show your face. Oh. Nan?
Wait.
Do you have any questions that you'd like to ask the owners?
Um, yes, I would, because I know that when you have a property that is above, like, are, they, there will be above our property, the, because of all the wells that are going to be drilled, our water pressure and the amount of water that we are going to be able to have will go down. And then there's the matter of gray water, like, where is the wastewater going? Is that going to go on our property? Because we have a French drain system that goes into a stream that then goes into a registered stream, which is a Sawkill.
Yeah.
Gray water is supposed to go into the septic system.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it leaches out.
But it leaches out.
So it's sewage. It doesn't, it's supposed to be refined by the, by the septic system.
Okay, and so you'll make sure that that happens?
It's also, also kind of Department of Health will inspect every septic system that gets installed.
Okay, and so. All right, thank you. And then the wetlands up there. Is, have they been determined?
Oh, yeah.
And now, because I've had someone come out on our property about wetlands, and they say you have to build 200 feet from the wetlands.
It's 100 feet.
Within all their regulations?
Oh, it's 100?
Woodstock has really good wetlands law compared to.
Okay, and then my other few questions are, when the construction happens, for those of us who are neighbors and our property abuts this property, what are your hours going to be? And are you going to be working on the weekends? And do you have any idea how long this project will take?
Something. We're looking it up.
I can kind of.
So.
The, after they get done with the planning board, the enforcement regulation happens within the building department. And, and if you have any complaints at any time, you're always welcome to call the building department and look into it. But there is, based on the town code, which I think you're going through right now, right? Your document?
Yeah.
There is something set, and it's, you know, they have to stick to what the town code says. And that's enforced by the, the ZO, the zoning enforcement officer.
Okay.
What's the answer to the hours? So we, we put seven to six on the DAF, but I didn't, I don't. Six on weekend? Yes, but I, I, I would have to just double check the town code. But whatever the town code is, is obviously.
And nothing on weekends?
Well, comply with, we have Saturday listed right now.
Saturday listed as you can build?
Yes.
Okay, so that'll be fine.
Nan, anything else, or you're good?
Um. I don't know, I'm just, I'm, I'm just very concerned about the environmental impact for, like you were saying before, like, the wells, you know, on the top of the mountain, you know, that water pressure goes down, and those wells dry out. So as we go down, and we go down, and we build more, and we build more. Um, and with climate change, we're having a real problem. I mean, last August was, like, we lived in Northern California. We had a French drain system put in, and the mud was cracking because we have no water. We used to be inundated with water, we have none anymore. So with those 12 houses being above us, like, it just, it, I'm, I'm just concerned about what will not only happen to us, but then all the other neighbors that are below us. And do you, how, how far does the study go?
What do you mean?
I mean, how far, like, you, you look at the impact of the land, the, the 12 houses. Do you look at the impact of the, there's another house above us, and then our house, and then the, for us, the six or seven houses below us about water and water pressure? Like, is it just the 100 acres? Is that all you inspect? Or do you have any concerns about the rest of the people in the town of Woodstock?
The thing I can say is, the zoning would allow them like a 40,000, minus the wetlands.
Forty?
Yes, that's the zoning, it's R3s. So they are doing so much less than what they could do. You're raising important questions. Changes in climate are going to make them more important, but it's not something that has been anticipated. And I don't know if it could be, because aquifers are flaky. I mean, literally, you can be next door to somebody and have different water at a different level.
Yeah, I heard that earlier, which I found very interesting, so thank you for that.
There's, um, there's environmental forms of every application that comes out in front of the planning board, and they're auto-generated through the DC. They have done extensive, they filled out the long one, which all applications don't have to, but they did. They have worked with Michael Nowiki for extreme environmental. And this subdivision has probably conserved more land on that parcel than the planning board has ever seen. Only because we've been working on this for a long time. Um. Did that answer any of your questions, Nan?
Yeah, it, it, and it makes me feel better about the impact that I think that all of us in the surrounding area will have. So thank you for that, I, I really appreciate it. And I appreciate them for not putting 40 houses up there.
Yes.
They wouldn't have gotten 40.
They might have gotten 20.
And they didn't go anywhere near that.
Thank you, Megan, thank you, Nan.
Thank you.
Nan, is there anyone else online on the Zoom call that would like to speak to the applicants? One more? Going place, nope, that's.
There's someone.
Anybody else in the audience have questions to the applicant for this application? Okay, we're still in the public hearing. I just want to point out, as Melissa said, that this is one of the largest subdivisions the town's done in a long time. And, uh, and there are quite a few wetlands in it, and the applicant has been very giving to, uh, to put a lot of the land in conservation. As you just heard, over 70% of the land is, is being preserved. So this is a wetlands water course permit public hearing. And we do findings to, uh, to come to a determination whether or not there's serious environmental impact. And in this particular project, of all lots being put in, there's one acre, 1.01 acre of a wetland buffer disturbance. And to mitigate that, we normally ask for that same amount to be preserved somewhere else. Well, in this case, the applicant has preserved about 70 acres. So we certainly satisfied the mitigation aspect of it.
And the way the roads are being designed.
What's that?
And the way the roads are being designed with swales and with, you know, undercuts for the amphibians to go through.
Slip in place.
Really quite a model.
We, you know, did the findings, and, uh, we came up with an egg deck. One question on the, on the, on the questionnaire is asked if there's any disturbance to wetlands and buffers, and there is. So that's just one checked the yes, but it's still an egg deck. So if there's no other questions for the public hearing, I'd like to propose a motion to close the public hearing.
Seconded.
On favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, Melissa. Our next step, yep, I got it here, is to make a motion to approve the application pending draft resolution.
E. We accept the, say that again.
To approve the pending.
Finally, we approve the pending draft resolution.
It's like.
All in favor?
All right.
All right. Hi, guys.
Um. Thank you, everyone. I spoke to, I emailed to John Lyons, and just, I want to let you guys know that this is very nice. But he said he's doing a webinar about land usage, which, you know, is all this thing, and he's using you guys as an example in our resolution.
So this was the wetlands water course, and we still have the.
So this was the wetlands report, so we still have the full subdivision to approve.
No, no, it's all included.
It's all.
We have, we, we will, we will approve the resolution at the end of the meeting.
And it's all there.
Congratulations, Megan.
Thank you. Should we hang around for that? Thank you.
Alright guys, good job. Okay.
Well, I think it's, I mean, discussion's tough with some other people, because subdivisions happen weirdly. Look, I have complete water fear of my water not coming out of my faucet. I get the fear. It's like, but. But I think the other thing is that to move next to a large industrial area, you risk something else. And like my current house, I moved when there's nowhere that you go in the right direction. I feel kind of safe. No, I, I totally get that concern. Every time it hasn't rained for three weeks, I think, yeah.
Okay, folks. We have another public hearing. Well, sorry to bring you back for this, but we have to do it.
Yeah.
As I told Melissa, if we didn't do it in a month, two years from now, someone said, I wasn't told about, was it a public hearing? Well. Next public hearing. Here's Diane Katz. This public case, public board. Case here in 23 dash 1116A. This is a public hearing for subdivision application for a lot line revision to revise lot lines of two parcels resulting in two new lots of 5.82 acres and 3.03 acres in the R3 zoning district located at 253 Upper Bird Cliff Road in a contiguous lot in Woodstock. And Colin Houston is the surveyor and the applicant's rep. So I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
On favor? Okay, is anybody from the public, either online or in the house, has questions for Colin? Lot line revision.
Is anyone on Zoom for the Katz lot line revision? I don't see any names.
Didn't think so. Is there anybody in the public?
Nope.
Okay, here we're done. And having none come in, I'd like to hear a motion to close the public hearing. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We had to do it.
Approve the application, keep moving. One more.
Okay, so make a motion to approve the application pending draft resolution. On favor? Aye.
I'll give you the resolution probably tomorrow, latest Monday, probably tomorrow.
Okay. And fees, what do we?
You'll see it all in there.
Okay.
It's just all laid out.
Is there gonna be a rec fee?
No, it's a lot longer.
Yeah, okay.
No, no, no.
I was all ready to make it, aren't you?
No, no, no. We did email back and forth. Did you get what I said?
Yeah, okay.
There's a minor lot line revision, sorry Colin, but.
Hey.
I'd be remiss if I did.
I have nothing but work to do at home anyways.
Take care. I'll talk to you soon.
Okay. Alright.
We're working the subject, yeah, we're, we're doing subject.
Perfect.
Maybe I should have given.
This is Caleb Hartman, my neighbor, he just informed me, he is on his place, also working on the septic.
They also asked me to provide a guide rail detail. I know they're. I had only learned about it today, but I can give.
You're gonna email me that tomorrow or Monday?
I was hoping that it was already done, but I will make sure it gets.
Negative. Great, if I can have.
I will. I'll make a note of that right there.
There's a few, right?
Yes, sir. There's three copies there.
Okay, we have now a sketch plan review. And this is Vasilad Luvisky and Rebecca Collins, specially used permit number 22 dash 0670. And this is the second sketch plan review of a special use permit application to construct a single family residence within the scenic overlay in R8 zoning districts located in California Quarry Road in Woodstock. And the rep is Daniel. And this is a second sketch plan review based on the information the planning board needs to have in the scenic overlay. And the first one was, was the driveway acceptable? The town highway department and fire department went up there and wrote a letter to the planning board. It said the driveway was acceptable, but they, they suggested or required that we have a turnaround and guardrails in place. And since that is public safety, the planning board would certainly agree to those conditions. So do we have here a application in the scenic overlay? And the planning board has, after a debacle last time around with an applicant trimming some trees in the scenic overlay, we've decided to go through a list of, of requirements to determine and to ensure that the development on that site will not be visible to the valley and town below. So to do that, we have to go through a list of things. One of them is a site visit, which has been done, I believe. James was on the site visit. And Melissa. And uh, and Butch. Uh, I don't think any of the W E C was there. We have requested the W E C to review scenic overlay applications. But I think everybody will realize that that is a very difficult steep driveway. And I don't know how many people want to drive up and down it. So we've done a site visit and we've addressed the driveway. The next issue that the town wants and the planning board needs is drone photographs taken of the site from a distance and above showing what's presently there in terms of trees and, and screening. And then to be done following the development. Uh, we need to determine steep slope. We need to make sure that we're within the limits of steep slope and soils limits. We're also going to request a balloon test showing the visibility of the site to be coordinated with the Woodstock Environmental Commission on a certain date so that the site can be viewed from multiple views from town. The planning board has to review screening to make sure that this proposed structure is screened from the valley below. Um, we're also going to require that there is non-glare glazing on the windows facing the valley below. And we also will get some Woodstock Environmental Commission recommendations. So with that said, I know that the planning board, the applicant has showed the planning board the design of the building. In this case, actually, the planning board's cases, except for uh, Grayden, who's a architect, may care about the design of the building. But really, the planning board's concern is to make sure we can't see the building. So those are our objectives. So if the applicant wants to.
Judy has another concern.
Um, as I look at these drawings, I want to know what these terraces are. Are they added to the existing concrete?
Dan can tell me what was online. I just don't see or hear him, but he was online. He's the, he's the architect.
That's his man.
Yes.
I mean, the question that I guess I have has to do with why we limit building on steep slopes. And whether this is disturbing the soils or whether it's anchored adequately or if we had, you know, severe rains and the subsoils were affected by water, I really, I, I don't know what these terraces are made of and how much they add to stability versus interfering with it.
Well, Julie, we can definitely ask for an engineer's opinion of that. We definitely need to determine whether it's a steep slope or not. I mean, I know Butch took a look and said, well, it's okay. But we need an actual elevation to elevation to make that determination. And as you said, soils are important on steep slopes.
Town code is specific about the limits.
So those are, those are very serious concerns that are written into our scenic overlay regs about steep slopes. So.
Dan, are you with us? Are you hearing the planning board concerns?
Um, can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Oh, good. Yeah, I'm hearing everything you're saying, just having a little technical difficulty.
All right, just want to make sure you are online and hearing us.
Yeah. Um, the graphic that you see is really just measures to stabilize the soil after it's uh, been cleared and excavated for the house to go in. And it's to prevent runoff during and after destruction. That's a, uh, one I've mentioned about what those um, darker gray lines are. That's not landscaping. Right. Um, as far as the slope, we did comment on that at the last meeting. We're, we're trying to look at really what it says right now, but we're, we were below what was required for uh, the maximum slope.
What is this here? Is that my hall?
Uh, you're showing right now?
Yeah.
That was a first draft showing the line going to the septic system, but that has since been altered by the engineer to suggest that we traverse the hill diagonally, uh, making it easier to get to the lower level where the septic system will be. So we were proposing to just take down enough trees to gain access with a pass for BACO to get down there to do testing and then to install the system. So the trees would not be taken down directly south of the house.
The septic system's down here at the bottom?
Yeah.
Wow. You're never gonna have trouble with your toilets backing up, are you? Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, you understand the issue about the glazing. I can show you photographs taken of that mountain with light reflecting off glass. Pretty rough, so we definitely want.
Yes, we addressed that as well at the first meeting, where we're um, we're staying below.
Nan, I muted you on accident because you got a picture and a phone. Sorry. Thank you.
I'm sorry. All right, is that better?
Yes.
Okay, um, yeah, we, so we addressed the, the glazing at the first meeting. And again, we're below the requirement. We're using different methods for minimizing any glare and that's with uh, with non-glare glazing, we have shades over windows on the exterior. And we've also minimized the amount of glazing on the, on the building.
Okay, but the planning board has the right to ask for uh, non-glare glazing regardless of any other mitigation measures.
Okay.
That, that, the glare that comes off the windows on those houses up there is unacceptable, so. That's something we have to require. Any other questions by planning board members through? So the biggest, the biggest issue is going to be, you're gonna have to demonstrate to the planning board and to the town that when this building is built, that we can't see it. You're not gonna need screening to do that. And so that's why the drone photographs are important to show us what it looks like now with a balloon test there, so we can actually see what we, what those trees that you say are in front are screening. And of course, the next big question is what if those trees die or disappear in the next couple of years? Then what do we do?
Oh.
We need to make sure that no matter what, that the is not visible from the town.
We did do drone shots already. We have videos and still shots. Uh, one just before the leaves fell and then just after the leaves fell. So we can share that with you. And then I think if you look at the um, the, the over head view as it exists from a Google image, that it is completely tree at this point. There's, there's, it's virtually solid trees. And I think even the board members that were there said that there is just no way that you can see this house from below. There's, you know, hundreds and hundreds of trees between this house and anything below it.
Okay, well, that will certainly be determined with a balloon test. That's how we'll know that. We have to know that for sure. And uh, the other issue, of course, is the driveway, which we discussed. And I don't know if board members had any other questions, Grayden, you, or questions regarding the. The other?
Okay, how big is the leach field, which presumably will be a clear cut space in the woods?
Would that require a balloon test also, that area?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you gotta clear for unless it's cleared.
So do you want them to do some engineering work on their side? Do you want them to do some engineering work on their side for these questions? To start?
Well, we're gonna, yeah. This is the most critical view in Woodstock.
Do we have any building sections, site planned sections in the building that show its relationship high on its hill to the trees down below it? You know, you're cutting a lot of trees and regrading to create this flat, this plateau to build the house. And so the trees below it are quite a bit lower than the house. I'm assuming the tops of the trees are maybe not as high as the roof of the house.
That's what I would think, yeah.
So we have a section that we committed with the first application that shows the cross-section through the site.
Agreed, the drone photographs will pretty much show us when we.
These are pretty put.
Contours. Okay.
Yeah.
And the house is gonna be up kind of back here in this corner.
Yeah.
So they have to be pretty tall trees, but that's very steep.
Do you want me to ask one to take a look? Let me ask one to take a look.
And it's all deciduous looking at it, because this is a winter flyover.
And there's always tree topping.
I don't think.
But this is from 2021, so.
We, we have drawings from them of building sections.
I will give, yes, remind me and I will send you everything.
Okay.
And if not, I will, oh, Dan, but I'm pretty sure I have that one.
Did they work on the turnaround in the driveway in the new plant?
Yeah, I don't have, I wasn't up on that one, but yeah, they want a turnaround and they want guardrails, so it senses.
I don't know about a turnaround. I, I don't think.
Well, that's turnaround, but he said they wanted a.
They wanted.
Pull over, is a better word. Yeah, I don't think you'll turn a truck around there.
I haven't received much from Dan from the initial, so I don't, I don't have any updating. Like what I have is what you guys have seen, so I don't, if there has been work done, I haven't seen.
Um, we, I did send a letter in after my conversation with. Um, we, I did send a letter in after my conversation with the fire inspector.
We did receive.
Um, and I, so I.
I don't know if you missed it, Dan, Peter, Chairman Cross had said that we honor what the fire department and highway department says, so whatever recommendation they made, we will request.
Uh, right, so I, the only, um, question I had about it was the very last word where he says apparatus, and I questioned him about that because it makes it sound like a fire truck needs to turn around. And he said, I did not mean that. I meant ambulance. And I said, well, it's kind of important, um, you know, would you mind rewriting the letter? And he said, well, no, um, I won't, but they can call me with any questions. And that's why I wrote my letter to just clarify that. He's only looking for an ambulance to turn around. Um, and we have that based on the cars being able to turn around in the driveway. And the, the fire truck, um, pull off and turn around is a requirement by New York State for driveways that are 500 feet or longer, and this driveway is, uh, 300 feet.
What he said in the letter is to turn around emergency apparatus. That's a little unclear as to whether that's a fire truck or an ambulance.
Yeah, but the point simply is for safety and welfare that these things need to be done, guardrails and a pullover so that you know, if you have a fire, you've got one truck that's gotta pull over to let the other one get by with water in it. So that's pretty straightforward. So we just need to schedule these other issues. We need to schedule the drone flyover and the balloon tests and the screening test and the steep slope determination. And then the, the last point will be up to the applicant to prove to the planning board that once the building's built, that it cannot be seen from the valley below or glare off the windows. Schedule a balloon test whenever is good for everybody. You know, we've done it before. We did it for the TK, for the monastery on the same mountain. We've done a balloon test. So it's something the planning board does. Especially in this very, very prominent location.
I'll ask Greg to take a look.
Right.
And, um, I do know we did talk a bunch about the, that it is within, but I'll have him write me something just so that we further solidify that.
And you're saying balloon tests are both the leach field and the, uh, and the house? Is that what we are saying?
I don't really have any other, I guess, the only question, um, that I have and the concern is about the septic. Um, because at the moment, they can't just bring a machine down here to do the test pits for the health department. So, I mean, I know they were proposing, like you say, on his plan, they were coming straight down the slope. And we were suggesting crossing the slope and not having to cut out as many as trees as if you were coming straight down the slope.
Couldn't get it off higher level?
Well, no, you have, you still have to get down to the flat section that's here.
Oh, that's the flat section.
That's the flat section, yes. Um, that's, that, that is where the, he, the architect had sent me a plan. It looks like it's from 2004, an approved septic plan that had a septic down here in that location.
But all the septic's totally county.
Yeah, I know, but the, the problem is the access.
What we don't wanna do is make the mistake we did with Oringor where to get to put his septic in, he cut the trees down, which put him in violation and he still doesn't have a CO. So.
Yeah.
Well, that's not what they're, I, our concern is that, you know, they have to bring a machine down against the cross slope. And to do that, they would have to do some disturbance just to get down to the bottom.
Then that would have to be mitigated afterwards. It would have to be planted or something so that you don't see a big scar across the mountain from down there.
Well, the, the plan would be if, if you go crossways like that, is to try to avoid tree cuttings as you go down the hillside. Because if you went straight down, again, the pipe would be after the fact. I'm not saying there wouldn't be any tree cutting, but hopefully it'd be a lot less.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a straight line where you could look right up and it would be sideways, so there'd be some screening from the trees next to it. And my, my contour lines don't show any flat areas at all, but then this is just federal contour lines. It's not.
This is where they had the approval was roughly, this is the contours that we have splatter. It's, it is very proximate to where he had it on the architectural site plan.
Okay, I don't, we still have to determine the soils, so I don't know whether we're dealing with, uh, steep slopes or, uh, or bad soils. I don't know how long ago the perk tests were done.
Again, the, the sheet he sent me is either, it looks like it's a 404, is what it looks like that was approval. I can't guarantee that it's.
Was, well, that's up to the county, of course, but.
Well, they wouldn't take any of that. They would have, it has to be due none. They need to. There's no, we're not going back to that. I just did saying that the site had had previous approval, but it was 20 years ago.
Two, I think I can let go of two years. They'll, they'll accept for him.
Five, they might accept on five. Two for, two for, two for the permit. Not for the, you can still get a permit after five years after the fact. But you have to renew the permit every two years.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, that's up to the county health department for your permit. But I, I understand your problem to get there.
You know, I think you're, you're here for a special use permit for the, the construction of the house. So that's like.
Well, I'm just saying, it's, it's likely that we could get approval again. That's all I was trying to make a point.
It's the same location.
It's the same location that, yes, that's the, I, I don't have that map printed out, but I mean, we could print that out and submit it as well.
Good idea.
Yeah, definitely. And thank you. I appreciate that insight.
I'm just not sure what the solution's gonna be if it proves that the vegetation that is there does not conceal the building. I'm not sure how you're gonna overcome that because you'd have to put in a 50-foot tree, which is not easy to do, as Oringor will tell you.
Yes.
So, um, that'll be the biggest challenge to show us that, uh, the house will not be visible.
Can you get to that? No, you really can't get to that site from somebody else's property.
I haven't investigated, but I can ask a subject about that.
We didn't make it up in a Prius. That's why.
I understand. Barry is more familiar with that site.
See, there's a, there's a house here and it looks like. That might be easier to access that site for the test.
Yes.
Than trying to go from the outside. Not so much down below. That looks terrible, but there is the, the neighbor's house. And I have to warn you that's property lines on my maps are not accurate.
I understand that, yes. I know that very well. Be off 20 feet without any problems.
Either way.
Either way, yes.
Through the middle of a house for sometimes.
Any other questions you guys have? Well, so you got everything you need?
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you. Talk to you soon.
Okay, our next case. Be an interesting one. It's Howstein. It's an irrevocable family trust, special use permit 230673. This is a sketch plan review of a special use permit application to remedy a violation for tree removal in the scenic overlay in R5 zoning districts located at 358 Abbey Road in Mount Trevor. And Mark and Karen Hellenstein are the reps. So if you would tell the planning board, uh.
You gotta mute yourself, Mark.
What's going on up there?
Can you hear me?
Hey, Mark, we can hear you. Tell the planning board what, yeah, what's going on.
Okay, um, so what happened is on, in January 2nd, we hired, um, Arbor Art to cut down some trees at our house. Um, there was a tree that was leaning over our garage and threatening the garage, so they took that down. There were some dead or compromised hemlocks in the back and a, a crab apple that was pretty much dying that they took down. And then we had asked them to take down a few trees to open up a view toward the, um, the mountains. Um, it was going to be a partial view. It was supposed to be between two oak trees. And, um, I mean, I envisioned and, and thought it would be a series of, you know, five or six trees. And they ended up not just taking down the trees between the oak trees, but ended up taking a lot of trees down on both sides. Um, this happened in a very short time. The first day they did the remedial, or the work around the garage and the, uh, dead trees in the back. And literally within a couple hours in the morning on the second day, it was supposed to be a two-day job, full two-day job. It was very foggy that second day. Um, they started and we ended up taking a walk up our mountain. And by the time we came back, they had taken up, down probably close to 10 extra trees on both sides of the oaks, um, as well as, you know, several of the trees that would have, that, that did open up our view. Um, and that's what happened. And it was, uh, not anything we envisioned, not anything that we intended to do outside of getting the view, and we didn't do it very well. And they sure didn't do it very well. So I guess that's, and what?
Did the cutting of the trees expose your buildings in any way to the, to the view or to anybody else?
Uh, yeah, the, the neighbor across the street apparently complains. He can't see it from his house, but when he drives up his driveway to the road, he can. And one of the remedial, um, things that we're suggesting is to, you know, put some fast-growing conifers down there at roadside. Um, and in the property area where they cut down all these extra trees, um, to replant. But yes, um, it's a small little gap and that gap unfortunately will probably have to be used to take out the trees because that's part of the remedial plan as well, is to remove all the trees or as many of them that, as they can that are down. Um, we've talked to a few different people about this and, um, there's some concern with a few of them that it might cause more damage. To down all the, we're talking about is strip them and, and chopping the, the brown to the ground. Um, the trunks that, a dead tree, uh, to get in to this place. There is a, a, a gully or um, you know, go, a drainage ditch uh, middleway and the people we've talked to and, and the person that takes care of the road, John Campasso, um, is all on board with putting in a culvert there and some material to gain access to that area. And then, of course, to remove all that once this is over. So that's kind of where we sit. And we feel terrible. I mean, okay, I'm sorry.
It doesn't look like it's it. That's because this is Abby up here. That's Abby up here, so it would be down here.
Yeah, it's down, it's down. That, that's the house, I think, right here, right? The dark, is that right? I would guess.
Yes.
That's the house. So it's, it's down in this area. There, there should be a, oh, I didn't have it on my computer, the plan. But there should be a plan in there in the materials that we sent. So it's down in this area. It's, it takes up about this much space, I would guess. Um, there was probably a total of, I would guess, 25 trees or so, so, um, but I mean, that's counting the tree that was compromised or that was challenging the garage. I don't think, is the garage even on here? Oh, this, no, the garage and, I don't know, anyway, um, but and there's some trees, there's.
Location wise.
There's two oak trees.
I guess the question is, is, is it gonna, is it visible now from a distance? Did you open up your house to be visible from a distance or just from the neighbor?
Yeah, I think.
I guess that's something we're gonna have to determine.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like way down by.
Yeah, it's down by the road.
But it seems to me, I don't ask the rest of the planning board, it seems to me the solution is to get, like, you're gonna get a forester to figure out how to replant.
Yeah, that, that's what we're hoping. Um, I will say that we have, I have two friends who, one is a landscape architect forester, but is, and he does a lot of stuff with some of the ski resorts and stuff as far as setting those up. And another would taught forestry, but I think Melissa mentioned that there's another forester that sometimes you use. That's another possibility.
We have one too. We have a forester we work with that.
Okay, so for us to utilize the forester that we trust, um, and she would help you guys out and come up and kind of give us a determination. What I would need to do is collect some escrow to just get her on board. And she would meet with you and she would write us a full written report named Lori Raskin. She's worked with us before. Uh, I believe we'll start with 1,500. I just gotta check with her. And that's just to cover her costs to help with the case if you guys are okay with that.
Is, is, could I just ask a question about the forester? Is, is she helping to both talk about removing trees or just about the replanting or the, both?
Remediation.
Oh, just in, okay.
She probably knows.
But she's, she's, she's phenomenal. Um, we've worked with her before. Very successfully. Um, and she will, she's been known to help, help and be very, very kind. You know, like, meeting with you and talking with you and like the future of, and she's very knowledgeable.
Yeah.
I just, I, I know it's a lot. I know you didn't plan on being here, but it's the process that we have to use consultants that we trust, like.
No, no, no.
That went above and beyond in submitting, you know, and thinking about how to remediate this, which we appreciate. Um, but we need someone that, that on an even turf, so that's why I'm saying that I think it might be the best interest to collect escrow and get Lori Raskin involved.
Okay. So, we. And will you give us that number or whatever? Or you set that up, Melissa, or what?
I, I will set that up, um, as soon as I receive the, the establishment of escrow funds for $1,500 from you.
Okay, well, we'll be back, as you know, we're, we're out here.
Yes, Mark, no worries. You, you know how to reach me all the time. As soon as you guys, I know you're out of town.
Yeah.
This affected area on Middleway Road, like, really clear to see? Like, if you just drove on Middleway Road, you'd see it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so if we wanted to not do an official site visit, just drive by it and look at it, we'd, we'd see.
Yeah.
Mark, if you wanna shoot in the mail a check for me, you can do that and then I can start talking to Lori now so we can get this.
I don't have my checkbook here. We're gonna, we're gonna be back in a week, Melissa, so I'll, I'll come by and, and bring it to you, okay?
Any other members have questions? Judy?
Probably the right time of year to do this because it's still.
Yeah.
Well, that's good to hear.
You don't wanna wait until summer.
Yeah.
Growing season.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not clear if it exposed it.
I know. If you guys wanna go take a ride, we, we could do that.
Okay.
Thanks, Mark. We'll be in.
Thank you.
All right, Judy's up for approved draft resolutions for FAM acres.
I approve that we approve the draft resolution for FAM acres. Planning board number 211226 and Wetlands and Water Course Permit 21045. And we also do.
Sure.
On cats, TB 2311, 111, 1116A. 1116A.
Okay, here a second.
Okay.
On favor?
Aye.
All right.
Well, that's Brian. John is still there.
That's okay. We got John. We got, we got John Vernine. Everybody else. All right.
All right. Any, any members have any questions before adjournment? Uh, obtain a motion to adjourn.
Brian left, so he didn't get to say no.
Bye, guys. Thank you.
On favor?
Aye.